I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to fly on the United States of America and to be a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Emmettance.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Rose.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mr. Sustich.
Here.
Eight members present this evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Disk, we're ready for our high school construction update.
Thank you, always good to see you. Project moves on, if you've been past the site, you know that, or maybe you don't know, but the two synthetic fields are ready for inspection, and that will happen tomorrow. Hopefully after the inspection, they can be accepted, maybe we can move on and play on them a little bit, we'll see. The softball field sod and dugouts are in place, the fencing's going up for the backstops and the outfield fence, the site has been graded around it. The tennis court nets went up today, the tennis court screen fence is going up and should be finished in the next day or two. There are a couple bank boards that go on the fence that are part of the tennis play, they'll be up also within the next couple days, so the tennis court, other than the surfacing, the tennis court's facilities will be in. Across the field, across the street on the other side of Black Hawk, the sod field that is, will be the new football practice field is in place. The site is yet to be graded around it, the weather kind of caught up with us a little bit, we'll keep working through the weather and get done what we can. That site also houses the field events for track and field, so there's a pair of shot put pads there and a discus pad, there'll be a discus fence go up so that your field events are ready to go for the spring. There's no reason you shouldn't be able to use that field in the spring for spring track and track and field events. The asphalt path that is across the upper site, around the backside and in between the football fields and the softball field is complete, that was, we did it finish last night in the rain about seven o'clock, but we got it done. We also paved the last piece of Black Hawk Drive right by the east entrance of the stadium parking lot, that's now paved in. There are several contractors continuing to work on punch lists in the building, we're down to just a handful of items and we're working our way through. Tomorrow, there is a major site review of, by the entire design team will be here and we'll walk the site and do a site punch list, so we complete that, we're working our way out. We have no change orders to present or talk to you about tonight. We talked to you once upon a time about the concession restroom building, and we talked about the fact that we are going to create an electrical equipment building. We once upon a time talked to you about doing it in a temporary fashion, figuring out a way to house the electric gear and then put a temporary building around it. We've switched that. With the help of your own maintenance folks, what we plan to do is, and we poured the footer for it yesterday, we poured a footer that will accommodate a 10-foot square block building, permanent block building. We will house the electric gear in that block building. Your maintenance folks will help us lay the block, build up, you know, I got them a door frame today and a door, and they'll lay the block and put a roof on it so that you'll have a permanent housing for that electric gear. That building is built in such, accomplishes two things we wanted to accomplish. First, all the electric service comes into that building so that if you ever add to it, make it a full-size concession restroom building, you won't have to disturb all the electrics. That's all in place, and this building that we're building could become the corner of that new building, such that we would just simply build around it. We built footers so you could attach to it and just continue a building on when the time comes right for you to do that. So I think we've accomplished the two things that we wanted to accomplish, housing the equipment, not disturbing electrics in the future, and I think we also got a bonus of being able to make it part of a new building down the road. So that's underway. So that, I think your folks plan to start, we'll work with them in the next couple days to start laying blocks, so we should have a building here in a week or so to house the electric gear. So, site's moving on. Questions? I'll probably be hanging around for a little while, okay? I mean, there'll come a time when I'll say, I'll sayonara, but we're not quite there yet, so we still have some work to do. There are still five contractors who are still under contract and still working, and we owe them money because they've got to finish things. So we're going to work our way through that, so I'll stick for that, so, okay.
Well, we enjoy having you here, thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries eight to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 25th, 2012.
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries eight to zero. I need to announce executive session held November 13th, 2012, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, and, Ms. O'Rourke?
It is me tonight.
I am pleased to be able to share the following items of good news with you this evening.
The Bethel Park High School Forensics Team is off to a great start, earning two team trophies and several individual recognitions at the forensic invitational at Central Catholic. The team earned a second-place trophy in a combined speech and debate events, and a third-place trophy in the debate events. Earning first-place awards were Emily Augustine and Sean Becker, Shannon Fagan, Jared Single, Brandon Kell, Harrison Zelt, and Natalie Lalama earned second-place awards. Rebecca Rogers, Michael Crutt, and Molly Graham earned fourth-place awards. Shawna DeAngelis and Sarah Yulikovich earned fifth place, and David Erdzen brought home a sixth-place award. Congratulations to all of these students, and best wishes to the team as the competitive season gets underway. Three Bethel Park High School students received the extra effort award at the first quarter of the 2012-13 school year from the Steele Center Area Vocational Technical School for going above and beyond what is expected and demonstrating outstanding attendance, theory work, work ethic, and attitude. Congratulations to Matthew Dulovich, Jonathan Hammerly, and Nicholas Knoll. The Rotary Club of the Bethel Park recently recognized two seniors in its Students of the Month. Lauren O'Brien was named the October Student of the Month for her numerous community service endeavors, but most recently for her raising almost $10,000 over the last two years for Invisible Child, an organization focused on helping children in war-torn Uganda. Mia Rigati was named the November Student of the Month for the community service projects that earned her the 2012 Governor's Award for Outstanding Citizen Crime Prevention Efforts from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, including volunteering for the Police Pals Food Drive, the Adopt a Family Program, child ID cards, and recruiting members of the, to Bethel Park's Crime Watch Program. Each month, the Rotary Club recognizes Bethel Park High School students who have demonstrated a strong committed, a strong commitment to school and community service. The fall sports season is over for our high school sports teams, and it was a successful campaign. Our boys golf team won the section championship for the first time since 1988. Golfer Brody Taylor had a great season as a section champion and a finalist in the WPIAL and state tournaments. Our girls soccer team were section champions, WPIAL semifinalists, and qualified for the state playoffs. Our football team advanced to the WPIAL quarterfinals, also qualifying for the WPIAL playoffs where our boys soccer, girls volleyball, girls tennis, and cross-country teams. Amanda Rochelle competed in the cross-country championships for her third consecutive year. Congratulations to all of our athletes and coaches on a great fall season. The Pittsburgh Penguins Foundation hosted a press conference last Friday at the, in Neil Armstrong Middle School Gymnasium to roll out their PENNS FIT program, which provided floor hockey equipment to more than 250 elementary and middle schools in Allegheny County. Participating in the press conference was Principal Michael Brooke, Lincoln Physical Education Teacher Mike Shaw, and a group of Neil Armstrong 5th grade students who were in Mr. Shaw's physical education classes last year at Lincoln, who gave an outstanding demonstration of how much fun it is to stay fit and work together. I'm pleased to report that all Bethel Park Elementary Schools and Middle Schools successfully applied for this grant program, and will each receive $1,000 worth of equipment to enhance our physical education program. Washington Elementary students completed their annual Reach for the Stars reading incentive program, and 76 students read 38,853 minutes over a two-week period and raised more than $3,200 in pledges to help purchase books for their classroom libraries and fund PTO programs. Two students were named star readers for reading more than 1,000 minutes and raising more than $100 in pledges. Congratulations to Ian Cashman and Caitlin Kowalski. Other students who read more than 1,000 minutes were for Shinny Belaji, Suadate, Connor O'Neil, Caitlin Schultz, and Kylie Webster. Congratulations to all of the students who committed themselves to read. Franklin 4th graders are working with art teacher Kristen Ritchie to participate in the Omni William Penn Hotel's annual holiday card art contest. Each year, the hotel chooses a different school in the greater Pittsburgh area to create a drawing, picture, or design for their Hollywood cards, and this year Franklin 4th graders are participating. This year's theme is Holiday Wonderland, and the winning design will be made into a holiday card that will be used by the hotel. Congratulations and good luck to our Franklin 4th graders. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Student Government.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Sydney Craig, and I'm the senior school board rep from Student Government. And this past month for Halloween, we sold ghost cookies from Bethel Bakery to raise money for UNICEF, and we made $281 that we donated to UNICEF, so that was really great, and a lot of people participated. We recently had our homeroom rep elections, and so we will be having our first meeting with our homeroom reps tomorrow, which basically they act as our like House of Representatives, and they just give us feedback from students throughout the school. And we also had our freshman elections for class officers, and soon we're going to start planning our Secret Santa with our staff, which we do in December. So that's basically what we've been doing this past month.
And I got in trouble last month because I asked about the Powderpuff game, it was the junior rep, and I understand you guys beat the juniors in the Powderpuff game, right?
Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
PTA, PTO Council.
Hi, my name is Wendy Scaloniak, and this is Rochelle Edwards, we're co-presidents of the William Penn PTO, and we had some information we wanted to share with you about the goings-on with the other PTOs in the district. Washington wants you to know that for parent teaching conferences, this is the second year that parents signed up for their time while they were at open house, rather than being assigned by the teachers, and they implemented it last year and it was very successful. And so rather than having the teachers having to go through all the work of coordinating the sibling schedules, it allowed the parents to do so, which was very favorable for them. And their PTO is providing a teacher appreciation dinner on Thursday evening during conferences. Lincoln says that it's hard to believe that the holiday season is fast approaching. They finished October with a fabulous fall festival and scholastic book fair. They're preparing for their staff appreciation dinner to be held on the evening of parent conferences. Again, they're having Market Day and School Store. They have a family bingo on November 30th, and school-wide projects that they had this month consisted of collecting Halloween candy to send to the troops, toy collection by the kindergarten classes, and the Police Pals Food Drive. They're preparing for their Santa breakfast and for their holiday parties, and if you want more information about any of that, you can go to their website. Memorial had their first family bingo on November 2nd, they had a good turnout and their kids had a great time as always. They had another student store for the kids to get a chance to do shopping for some of their favorite school supplies on November 9th during recess. Their clothing and Sarah's sales are underway, and they'll be ready for delivery before the winter break. They wanted to thank Washington's Board for helping them out with, sharing their samples for the clothing sale so that they could display them during conferences. Their annual fall book fair is underway, and that'll finish up tomorrow. Their second PTA meeting of the year was held tonight, Joe Consalano from the Food Services Department joined them to talk about the survey results and a few other things. Officer Rigotti was also joining them to talk about the Adopt a Family Program and the safety IDs. The parent, their parents are looking forward to elementary conferences, and they are pleased to have partnered with the High School National Honor Society to offer babysitting during the conferences so that the parents don't have to worry about where their kids are during the conferences. And this helps out the parents, as well as the Honor Society students by letting them get the volunteer hours that they need to help maintain their status in the National Honor Society. They're looking forward to having their annual holiday festival and their holiday shop, which is planned for December 1st at the Community Center. At Neil Armstrong, their 6th graders are raising money for their shopping trip for Shem. Students are asked to donate a dollar for each fun day that they have set up at school, like pajama day, hat day, neon day, and so forth. And their Santa shop will be starting soon during their lunch periods. And then finally, at William Penn in October, we participated in an all-school movie night that was complete with free popcorn made by our new principal, Nicole Morris. Last week, William Penn also celebrated Red Ribbon Week to promote drug and alcohol awareness. The kids helped Ms. Morris to decorate the building with red ribbons and posters, and the students were, also wore something different each day to indicate their participation in the anti-drug program. In October, Vicky Flota, Janet O'Rourke, and Nicole Morris also helped us with our 4th grade battle of the books, so thank you to them. There was a school-wide turkey bingo, which was a fundraiser for our 4th grade activities, and that was well-attended, and they had a lot of prizes that were donated from a number of the vendors in the area. The PTO also started to order equipment from a wish list that the teachers created for their classrooms. We were able to purchase some extra equipment for them from a surplus of our PTO funds from last year. We already have our human skeleton which came in, and that's already being used in the classes, and the health teacher has reported that the kids really love it. And finally, we're wrapping up our Sarah's Candy and our Bethel Park blingware sales to benefit our PTO, and we just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you, thank you. Solicitors Report.
I've provided the board with our written report, and nothing further.
Thank you. And Mr. Sustich, do you want to bring us up to date on, we had a Facilities and Services Committee-
Sure, we have Facilities Committee meeting on October 25th, that we discussed the needs for upcoming HVAC, heating and cooling changes and other renovations over at Neil Armstrong Middle School, and ask you, there'll be an item later on in the Facilities and Services section to discuss how to move forward in that plan.
Very good, thank you. We are to the point of public comments on agenda items, this would be items that we would be voting on this evening. Does anyone wish to speak to us about agenda items? Microphone, please, thanks.
Well, under, oh, and the Board, Lee Ashland Drive, under Facilities, and I think Mr. Sustich said they're going to talk more about the item number three, the renovation project that Neil Armstrong suggested, that'll be discussed. And under the Finance Committee, item number three again, Amendment to Resolutions Number 15-2008, Series 2009, that we'll have a little explanation of what's-
And that ties into the previous one, but yes, thank you. Anyone else for agenda items only?
I'd noticed the amount of $11,000 for calculators, and I was just concerned as to why we would need them all of a sudden, and don't the iPads and so forth have them on them, the laptops? And also, I was just wondering about the roofing, if it, for, the new roof for this building, if it entails the whole roof or just the patchwork? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move into business items, and, no Curriculum Committee tonight, Mrs. Buckley, how about that? Personnel Committee, and Mrs. Rule.
There are eight items under Personnel, are there any that anyone would like to have held up? If not, I move that we approve, one, approval of substitutes, two, approval of leave of absence, three, approval of tuition reimbursement, four, appointment of personnel, five, acceptance of resignation, six, approval to extend unpaid leave of absence, seven, approval to extend temporary assignment to long-term substitute, and eight, approval of staffing changes.
Second.
Items one through eight under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Sustich, any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry eight to zero. Facilities and Services Committee, and Mr. Sustich.
I believe these items need a little bit of discussion, I mean, this is a combined meeting, so. Item one, the approval of a purchase of a trailer for the maintenance department, does anybody have any questions or comments on that item?
I would just like that further explained for us.
Sure. We have a, we've bought some new equipment over the years for the maintenance department to do backhoe. The backhoe is standard for hauling, that backhoe is pretty good, but the trailer we have isn't sufficient. So this would be a bigger trailer to handle that hauling, that backhoe from site to site. We would be using the backhoe, I mean, the trailer that we currently have has a spare end to haul it.
And we say hauling from site to site, so is this backhoe used at all of our various school sites, or every, every one of our buildings?
And this will fulfill the legal requirements to do so?
Mr. Howard, number two, the roof replacement here at the Administration Building?
Yeah, I'll let Buzzy handle that.
That's this roof above the boardroom.
Only this roof?
Oh, it's only this one, it's the flat portion above the lights. It's about 40, about 40.
And you're asking for it to be replaced because it's leaking, correct?
Yeah, it's the original roof, and it's leaking, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we had some bucket city-
Correct. Correct. And there's a guarantee on this replacement that we're going out for?
15 years. 15 years.
Anybody else? Matt, number three, just describe briefly, this is the first step in, it's going to be a long project, briefly what we're looking at, what we're thinking about at the AMS, and what this impact is first.
Sure, we, as you had mentioned earlier, we had our Facilities Committee meeting last week, or October 25th, to discuss the issues over at Neil Armstrong Middle School. The systems over at Neil Armstrong Middle School are original systems, that would be all of our HVAC equipment over there are original, except for the chiller, which we would not be replacing, but we would be replacing the boiler and all the air handling units. Some of the things that are tied to that with regard to how that project works is the removal of the ceiling and lighting in that, in the building to access the HVAC equipment that is in the ceilings. So along with the replacement of the HVAC equipment, we will, we will be looking to replace the ceiling tile and the lighting also. There are some other things, other components to that that we will probably be looking at, but those are the major items of the project at this time, so.
And the item under consideration for here is to do what?
The item tonight that we're asking the board for is to proceed with the design development, schematic design for that project, that would release the architect to start to prepare the documents on how that work would be done and how that work would be bid. Once that phase is done, we'll bring that information to the board for their review. We would probably, we will definitely at that time have a better project estimate for you to consider, and then the next phase after that would be to prepare construction and bid documents.
Are we putting a cost to this Hays work?
The cost is, it's probably right around 40%, 30 to 40% of his quoted number at the committee meeting.
Do we want a dollar figure in this motion?
One of the things, I'm sorry.
Do we want a dollar figure in this motion? Not to exceed, or a-
One of the things we'll have to do, Mrs. Cook, we'll have to bring, we'll have to have a contract with Hays Design Group, that needs to be done as part of this process, and those fees will be outlined in that, in the contract, and then we could, we could update the board exactly what the contract says at that time, if that-
But we're contracting with them via this motion to begin the schematics, but we don't have a, I don't like that we don't have a dollar figure associated with it.
I don't think it would be an exact fee because we're, you know, because he's working off of an estimate, yes.
It's going to tie into, all right, okay.
That's why we're kind of, we didn't want to, we could put a not to exceed amount there, if you want, we might have-
I would probably feel more comfortable to do that, if you want my honest opinion.
We could, we could, we could put 200, think of the, it was 600,000 for his, for his fee altogether, and then 30 to 40% of that would be about $200,000, so-
So we would say not to exceed 200,000?
Yeah, we can add not to exceed 200,000.
How do we need to do that on this motion? We haven't made the motion yet, can we run just read that in? Because we haven't moved anything, and we're just discussing it.
Yeah, I think we should add it in.
Okay, so you can just add it in, we haven't moved anything, so just add that in, okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have one more comment. Essentially, this would require gutting a lot of the interior of the school, wouldn't it? Not, not the walls, but the entire ceiling, I mean, it is a major project.
It is definitely a major project, and it would require removal of the ceiling tiles and the, and the area above the ceilings to get at and access to the HVAC equipment.
And that would also involve replacing all the plumbing for the boilers and things like that too, correct?
Yeah, in most cases, it would require the repiping of the building. We would, of course, would try to reuse whatever piping we could that was still in good shape, but our estimate right now is that it would probably require mostly, most of the piping being redone.
Why are we doing that? Are there leaks in the pipes at this point?
Yes, there are definitely leaks in the pipes at this time, we, our HVAC department spends a lot of time over at Neil Armstrong Middle School working on their systems.
Matt, I went to Neil Armstrong in 1969 when that school first opened, you know, just as a question, has any HVAC work been done on that, that school since then?
The only systems that were replaced are the, the main chiller system was replaced. The district internally added some small HVAC units to computer rooms and server rooms, but other, and other than that, I think that's all that has been done. There might have been a little bit in the renovation, the 1990 renovation, because they made some additional classrooms, so there might have been some work done there, but none of the major components had were replaced at that time.
In 43 years.
One last question.
We get to see some of those on our tour, by the way, can you go?
One last question.
Am I remembering correctly from the presentation as well that we could go in and just replace the boiler, but the pipes wouldn't handle it, and it would have leaks, more leaks than what we have because of the old piping?
Yeah, I think the leaking in the old piping's never, unless you replace it, is only going to get worse because of the age and the deterioration of the piping.
And this is looking to be a two-year project again, correct?
Yeah, I think we're still in that phase, but right now, it looks like we'd be doing this over the two summers, so we do half the project one summer and half the project in the second summer.
So that it would not affect the school year?
It'll definitely not affect the school year, we'll make sure that the plans meet that, that it won't affect the school year.
Do you consider the present HVA system reliable?
I would say no to reliable, I would say that we spend a lot of time over there to make it work as best as we possibly can, but there, it is one building that we definitely need to do the work on based on the amount of time that we spent there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing no other questions, I'd like to move, I'll move these items separately because I think they need to be separate. Number one, I'd like to move the approval of the purchase of a trailer for the maintenance department.
Second.
Items one, under Facilities and Services Committee-
has been moved by Mr. Sustage and seconded by Mr. Means. I believe we've had all our questions on those, so I'll just ask for, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Mr. Sustage.
Item number two, roof replacement of the administration building in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second. Item number two, under Facilities and Services Committee, has been moved by Mr. Sustage and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Mr. Sustage.
I'd like to move, to move item number three, renovation project at Neil Armstrong Middle School. And I'll read this as we made a change. Read, "The Board of Directors approves the administration's recommendation to contract with Hays Design Group for the renovation project at Neil Armstrong Middle School and to proceed with development and schematic design with an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars."
Second.
Item number three, under Facilities and Services Committee, has been moved by Mr. Sustage and seconded by Mr. Means. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Spicuzza, will you take that from me this evening, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. And since this is a combined meeting, would we like to just discuss any of the items at this point?
Yes. I would like to, uh, hear more about item five, the calculators. Because since we're doing, bring your own device to school now, don't they have calculators?
They do have calculators. And, um, the reason that we're requesting the calculators is, at this time, is that we've received information about the new Keystone exams. The students will be permitted to use the calculators with graphing capabilities during the Keystone exam, uh, actual test periods. So we wanted to make sure that those were available to the students. Students are not allowed to have access though to other devices that have other capabilities during those tests. So they'll be limited to the use of the graphing calculators. What we're proposing to purchase here is classroom sets for each of the math teachers who will be administering those tests. And they'll also be able to use these calculators throughout the year. They won't be distributed like textbooks are distributed for students to take home. They'll just be used for classroom use in class. So, um, students can use their own devices at home.
So how many classrooms are we addressing here?
Ms. Ruhl, do you know how many classrooms?
Um, I, I was talking ahead now, I doubt. I, I believe there were, I believe there were about as,
Thank you.
So we, I didn't hear how many classrooms. Do we have?
We have approximately thirteen math teachers at the high school, so we're anticipating that they'll be receiving the calculators.
So how many per classroom?
Uh, probably sets of twenty-seven, which is our class limit.
Okay, so we don't have, so we don't have any, so we're not replacing these, so we can't say, you know, it wouldn't say how old?
We have, we have some, but not nearly enough, um, to, to make sure that all of the students who will be tested will be able to have those at their disposal.
And you're hoping that this purchase is viable for how long then?
The graphing calculators under normal use usually last for anywhere from five to eight years.
I have a question on number three, if we're done with that. I just, I just like, uh, if Matt, if you could explain, it's not necessarily a question, but just if you could explain a little bit, uh, when we went out for the original series of this, how much money we went out to borrow? Could you also explain a little bit how much is left over at this present time and how much the current project we are looking to spend on the current project, or the new project?
I didn't bring all them with me, but I think I got this. So, uh, um, I think, first of all, the resolution, um, permits us to use the, um, construction money from the high school for the work we're proposing to do at Neil Armstrong Middle School. Um, originally, for the high school, we borrowed approximately ninety-four million dollars. Um, before that borrowing, we had a little bit of money borrowed for the elementary work. So, once you combine, once we combine those funds from the elementary and the high school, um, after everything is finishing up here, we're, we're estimating that we'll have six million dollars left over to work on the Neil Armstrong Middle School project. So, this, this motion permits us to use that six million to do the work at Neil Armstrong Middle School. I think I caught your questions in that.
That was what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Matt, one other question. Six million dollars left over, we can send it on other capital projects, but that bond is still restricted to construction and capital expenditures only?
No, yes, the only, it'd be for construction, capital projects, or debt service only.
And, and, and financially, it wouldn't be beneficial for us to take that money and try to pay down any of the debt, that six million dollars, and pay down the debt on that current bond issue?
Well, currently, the, the bonds are not callable on the, on the bond issue, so we would have to, um, if we would choose to do that, we would have to place that money in an escrow account, uh, for when the bonds become callable or to pay current debt service with it. So, um, we, we, uh, the business office does not feel together that that would be something that would best serve, to serve the district at this time.
On item seven also, batteries for laptop. I saw you, um, you got three bits, anywhere from five thousand to twelve thousand dollars. And, um, this is for the, this is batteries for replacements for the laptop carts, not the laptops? Now, these are, what, four or five-year-old computers is, is a worthy of going ahead and putting that kind of money into them?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was gonna defer, I was gonna defer to Ron, so.
And that's the shortest answer you'll ever get from Ron.
If you want him to stop there, that would probably be okay.
Can you expand a little bit?
These, these are HP laptops that were purchased, uh, I wanna say in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Um, there's three carts altogether. One cart is, uh, is older and the other two are newer. Now, but there's only a year difference between them. Uh, they were bought with two gigs of RAM in them, so they're still very current. Um, they're running Windows, the Windows Vista or Windows Seven. Um, these, uh, two carts are at Neil Armstrong and one cart is at Ben Franklin. Um, when we bought them, we bought them with, uh, dual batteries. Uh, we're seeking just to replace the internal battery. Um, that should still give us about three and a half to four hours runtime. And, um, of the ninety laptops that were originally purchased, I think we still have eighty-three of them in good working condition. So, yes, I think it's worth the, uh, continued investment. And by doing this, we'll get two more years at least. And we'll probably get more than two years out of a lot of them, but, um, I think we'll get two more years out of most of them. Thank you.
I have a total of seven items today to, um, move forward. Would anyone like any of them held out additionally? If, if seeing none, I will move the following: seven items, item number one, bill list for November two thousand twelve. Item number two, the AIU Joint Purchasing Board. Item number three, amendment to resolution number fifteen dash two thousand eight, series of two thousand nine. Item number four, property tax agreement. Item number five, approval of the purchase of calculators for the high school math department. Item number six is items declared unused and unnecessary. And item number seven is the approval of the purchase of information technology equipment.
Second.
Items one through seven, under finance, have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Sustage. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Before I ask for public comments this evening, I want to take this opportunity to clarify some of the erroneous statements that have been shared by members of the audience over the past couple of months during the public comments portions of our meetings. While we certainly appreciate your attendance and participation in our meetings, it has become increasingly difficult to sit here silently while statements are being made that simply are not correct. Since the negotiation process began, the school district and the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers have agreed to not publicly negotiate specifics of the contract, because we both felt that does not positively impact the negotiations process. However, we feel it appropriate at this time to set the record straight about a few issues that have been raised in public. One incorrect statement made in the past is that the district can't afford to give teachers raises because it gave all of the money to the administrators. This is simply not correct. In fact, the opposite has occurred. When the district named Ms. Loy Rose as our superintendent last, last January, we realigned the administrative team using current employees to save the district money. Additionally, in light of the cuts to public education funding from the state and federal governments, all of our administrators voluntarily took a wage freeze for the two thousand eleven, twelve school year in order to help the district balance its budget with a minimal tax increase. It is true that seventy-four percent of the district's total budget is salary and benefits and that our three hundred and seventy-five teachers utilize sixty-five percent of that budget category. However, that does not mean that the administration receives the other thirty-five percent of the money budgeted for salaries and benefits. There are seven hundred and twelve employees in the Bethel Park School District, which also includes secretaries, paraprofessionals, custodians, maintenance employees, bus drivers, and bus aides, who also comprise that remaining thirty-five percent of the salary category. And for the record, fifteen of our district's twenty-three administrators make less than the top of the teacher's salary scale for twelve months of work as compared to the teacher's ten-month schedule. Another rumor out there in the district is that the district wants to have unlimited class sizes. I want to emphasize that the district has no desire to have sixty students in an elementary class, as it has been rumored. Besides not having an elementary classroom in the district that could physically accommodate sixty students, we agree with everyone in the Bethel Park educational community that reasonable class sizes are preferred for optimum, optimum instructional opportunities. Currently, sixty-six of our seventy elementary classes range in size from fourteen to twenty-six students, with four classes at our maximum of twenty-seven students. At the secondary level, we are contractually restricted to twenty-seven students per classroom. At this time, when an elementary class exceeds a certain number of students, we pay our teachers an extra stipend for each child over that number. But in grades five through twelve, the contract prohibits adding any additional students. When a class exceeds twenty-seven students, the district is required to create another class. Sometimes this means we pay our teachers an extra stipend to teach the extra class and sometimes it requires hiring another teacher. When a school does not have the space, an additional classroom might need to be established, either by erecting portable classrooms or putting permanent additions onto a building. Being locked into an automatic creation of another classroom, once a hard and fast number of students is reached, can prove costly, far beyond the salary cost of adding another staff member and purchasing additional curriculum materials, furniture, technology, and so on. For those of you who believe we can't settle the teacher's contract because we build a new high school, again, this is not true. The district began budgeting for the creation of a new high school back in two thousand six. When the district borrowed ninety-four million dollars in June two thousand nine to pay for the high school project, that necessitated a one-time-only point oh one seven millage increase in taxes. The money that was borrowed is the only money needed to pay for the high school project. As we discussed this evening, the money that is left over can only be used for other construction projects or reducing the district's debt. By law, any money left over from the high school project cannot be used to pay salaries. Some of you have suggested that the district can simply raise its millage to cover any salary increases in a new contract. Let me explain that this is no longer the case. Since two thousand and six, Pennsylvania's Act One limits the amount school districts in Pennsylvania can raise taxes. School districts that desire to raise taxes above a state said index must go to voter referendum to receive permission from the taxpayers to raise taxes above the index. The state index for Bethel Park in two thousand twelve, thirteen limited the district to a one million dollar increase in taxes. To put that dollar amount in perspective, the rates for employee hospitalization for all district employees in two thousand twelve, thirteen increased by five percent, costing the district an additional three hundred and, three hundred thousand dollars from the previous year. And the district's state mandated contributions to the Pennsylvania School Employees Retirement System increased by four percent, costing the district an additional six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The state-established index for the current school year did not provide the district with enough money to cover much more than these two increased mandated expenditures, let alone employee raises. Because we were unable to raise taxes above the index, the district was forced to look for other areas in the budget to cut, which the district did, thankfully, without having to furlough any more employees this year. And I hate to tell you this one. The projections the district received last week from our healthcare consortium predict an additional ten to fifteen percent increase for next school year. This increase in healthcare alone for next year will inflate our expenditures for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, well above the index allowed by Act One. Regardless of all the financial hurdles the Bethel Park School District faces, we remain committed to bringing an equitable resolution to the negotiations process and at the same time, living within the new financial constraints imposed on all Pennsylvania school districts by the governor, legislature, and Department of Education. Before I wrap up my remarks, I wanted to also comment on the Federation's informational flyer that has been distributed. We agree with everything that's on the flyer. We don't want unlimited class size, as I explained previously. Neither do we want to eliminate teachers' preparation periods. The Federation correctly points out that the district is currently losing more than seven hundred thousand dollars a year to students attending alternative educational opportunities. You may recall that the district created an online cyber academy last year to bring as many of those students back to the district as possible. But we were unable to advance this initiative because the Federation has continuously blocked our efforts, citing the fact that they are working under status quo and have offered to file an unfair labor practice charge against, against the district if we would proceed with the online academy. Because of their refusal with us on this initiative, we had to tell students who wanted to enroll to enroll in our cyber academy this year that they could not do so. As far as negotiations are concerned, we have met with the Federation 55 times since April 1, 2010, in an effort to settle this contract, and have never once walked away from the bargaining table. Our goal throughout the negotiations process is to maintain a high level of excellence in the educational programs of the Bethel Park School District while minimizing the financial burden on its taxpayers. At this time, any resident who would like to address the board is invited to come to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to share your comments with the board.
Tom Majernik, 5460 Glen Hill Drive. I've spoken to you over the past several months, and the situation still remains the same. I've heard the board reiterate that negotiation is a two-way street. Both sides need to move. And the suggestion that the board is the only one who's made concessions, we all know, is incorrect. Both, you said that you had to walk, both sides had to walk to the line. I'm certain that the teacher representative here could tell you very easily and provide evidence that their concessions have been and what yours, and you can tell me what yours are. However, I suggest that maybe the problem resides outside both the board and the union. The only one who stands to benefit from dragging this out for three years and gains even more if this drags out longer is your council. As a resident, I suggest you reevaluate and reconsider who is providing the board with advice, just as other school districts have. This contract needs to be resolved in a fair and timely fashion for all parties concerned, the students, the residents, and the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Phoebe Georgis, 5757 Happy Hills Drive. I'd like to start by saying I am a junior at the high school, and I have attended Bethel Park Schools since kindergarten. In all my years of schooling, I have never had a teacher that I have not enjoyed. The teachers here are fabulous and deserve a fair contract. I'm a member of the Bethel Park Marching Band, ASBTHET, the symphonic band, Consequior, Ways &amp; Means, and even more clubs and activities here in Bethel Park. All of the teachers that run extracurricular activities after school help us to do what we love. The teachers in the classroom go above and beyond and are passionate about what they do here. This is why kids love the Bethel Park teachers and why the teachers should be treated more respectfully. I intend on going to school for early childhood education to become an elementary school teacher. I love kids, and so do these wonderful Bethel Park teachers, or they wouldn't have spent time and money to get a degree for teaching. I feel as though you, the school board members, are being quite unfair and ignoring the issue that our teachers do not have a fair contract. If all of you sit down in a meeting and get this settled, you could have a win-win contract and resolve this issue. It is just going to continue to make Bethel Park look bad if you keep putting it off. We all need to work together as a community and do our parts to correct this issue and keep this a great school district of which we are all proud. Our teachers deserve for you to sit down and get this settled. Make it your top priority to settle this before any other issues or projects you are planning. If you feel any other issues in the district are more important than this teacher contract, then you have your priorities wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindy Fabianic, 1017 Brookville Drive. The number-one reason my husband and I chose to move to Bethel Park was for the reputation of its school district. Let me rephrase that, the reputation of its teachers. Teachers are the most important part of the process of educating our children. A 700-seat cafeteria does not educate our children. A sod-filled field does not coach and encourage our children. And certainly, the lawyers and surgeons of our future are not grown in a green-certified building. They are taught by teachers. So where is the money for the teachers? This was a question I posed to the school board and was told, "Costs have increased. We just simply cannot give what we do not have." And the only potential solution was to raise taxes. How is it that a multimillion-dollar high school was just built, yet there is no money for the teachers? The answer, well, budgeting for the high school began years before the construction began. So the school board had the foresight to plan and budget for the construction of the high school, but not the raises of these teachers who were waiting for their step. We find that hard to believe. You were aware for 16 years that these increases were coming. I read in the open letter that the district believes what it is offering the teachers is comparable and, in some cases, better than what our neighboring school districts are offering. Well, I looked it up. Upper St. Clair, Mount Lebanon, and West Mifflin easily pay their teachers over $90,000 in their 16th step without a strike, a wage freeze, or a step freeze. How is that possible? Is Bethel Park the only district with increased costs? Bethel Park even had a higher school district millage than Upper St. Clair in 2011. And these other districts do not have a Green Globe certification estimated to receive over 1.5 million in state reimbursements. Bethel Park was ranked #12 in Western Pennsylvania for a reason: our teachers. We need to make this right. We need to support our teachers and continue to have a district new hires will want to come to. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Is anyone else going to speak tonight?
Hi, my name's Kim DeBaud, 907 Hollyland. You've seen me here, month after month after month. I am here to make the same request I've made the last three, four, or five months. Please settle the contract. I don't understand why there isn't a sense of urgency amongst the board to get this finished. I don't understand why this isn't your top priority, the number-one thing you need to do. I don't understand why it isn't important to you to get finished. And if you said, "Well, it is important for this to get finished," then do it! Please. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Todd Richard, 4315 Anna Street. Good evening. Mrs. Cook, I'm confused by a couple of things tonight in your comments. First off, about negotiating in public. On the Bethel Park website, very good at keeping the public informed, November 18, 2010, Dr. Knight put out a letter that had specific items in it about negotiations. To me, that's negotiating in the public, and that started in the beginning. I'll leave this here with Mr. Amadis if you want to pass it down. And the second is about unlimited class size. If we look at this district's website, again, we can take a look at the non-binding arbitration, and we can look at the fact-finding positions of both the board and the district. It says unlimited class size, but there's not too much in the way of definition. I believe you don't want to overload classes. I believe the comment of 60 kids in a classroom is a little bit far-fetched. However, I think, once you start getting to that maximum, it's kind of, you need to look at what's best for the kids. Our PSSA scores are extremely important. If you were to take, if you're at that maximum of 27, start dropping, pull seven out of each class to make up another one, it's going to be better for the kids. I know there's going to be problems finding places for that extra class to be, but we're just going to have to work through it. It's what's best for the kids. Maybe sometimes the bottom line's going to take a little bit of a hit.
Thank you.
Hi, Patricia Campbell, 708 Red Barn Court. Wow. To hear the comments, you'd think that you were the guys going on strike, you know? The only thing that keeps these contracts not being negotiated are the teachers' union. And our teachers' union has a penchant for going on strike. They've done so every single negotiation since 1975, save once. Save once. Save once. No, it is true. You can look it up. And, you know, when Pennsylvania leads the nation in teacher strikes and Bethel Park leads Pennsylvania, that's not a good statistic. We're proud of our community. We're proud of our schools. We're proud of our teachers, but we're not proud of that statistic. And why do they go on strike? Because they can. Because they get something out of it. And when we have the situation that you, Mrs. Cook, have clearly stated, there are costs, and, you know, these are non-negotiable, and when the administration has taken a wage freeze, when the people in the community have, a lot of them have lost jobs or have taken wage freezes or cuts, and especially with the last presidential election, if you look at the amount of companies that have announced layoffs, I'll bet there's going to be more Bethel Park residents who may, in fact, also lose their jobs. And to ask these people to pony up for more money when a reasonable contract has been offered, I think, is unconscionable. And so I would ask you, they have an entire teachers' union on their side, and we have nine people. And I just ask you to keep the balance, and don't forget the taxpayers in all this, because they do have a fair contract with built-in raises in it. And I think to...
Mrs. Campbell, that's two minutes.
Okay. I just ask you to hold the line and do what's right for the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Paisor, Arapahoe Road. I understand this is my time to address the board, but the community needs a time to address the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, since they have chosen to drag this community into this by walking out on our children and passing out so-called informational literature. What's next? Phone calls, knocking on our doors? Who knows? Even members of the community have no children in schools who do not attend board meetings and who do not attend board meetings. No, this contract dispute is not about class size or prep time or technology classes. It's about money. It's always about money. Rising healthcare costs have been in national news. Why didn't the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers plan for that? At the October 2010 board meeting, while saying out of one side of their mouth how much they love their job and the dispute is all about class size, what did the blue shirts hand out but flyers saying they could not have an HMO because it would make them lose focus in the classroom? The letter that was referred to here tonight by Mr. Richard was written in response to comments that were made at that board meeting. Now flyers claim out that the district wants unlimited class sizes, and thank you for addressing that. It's time for the AFL and CIO union thuggery to get out of school, and time for the membership of the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers to stop marching in lockstep with their leadership. Impeach your leaders, put members in charge that actually care about education and about the welfare of the students and the community more than the padding of their pockets. I still hold out hope that the majority of teachers, real teachers, in this district do not want their reputations to be drug through the mud further by their leaders and by the blue shirts that follow like lemurs marching to the sea. If teachers are to maintain any respect in this community, it's time to put an end to the lies and to acknowledge it was your leaders who have blocked you from possible raises, not the board, not me...
Mrs. Paisor, that's two minutes.
Thank you. Not me, not the silent majority that's afraid to come to this mic for fear of retaliation on their children and the chuckles, the chuckles by the mature members of this audience. Thank you.
Hi, Denise Stellin, 5969 Monongahela. I wanted to thank you for presenting that list at the meeting. I know a lot of parents have been asking for this information, and I would like to ask if that could be posted on the district website?
Yes, it will be posted under my board comments on the district website.
We'll make sure we refer everyone to that. And once again, I do appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly Turner. I commend the board for what they're trying to do. It's been a long, hard process, and I agree, money is the bottom line. We can't do anymore. We're giving and giving and giving. I had children going to school. What about all the people they're paying for 50, 60 years and have never had any kids go into the district? That's hurting. And when they have no money coming in or not raises coming in, and then they have to shell out, and then the assessments are there, and then the taxes go up because of the assessments, that is not fair to the people. Be sensible. Don't cry when you come to this microphone. Don't tell us about your operations that you supposedly can't have. That doesn't work. That doesn't wash. Just get it done. You say that you love the kids, you love your jobs. Do the job. If your negotiators can't negotiate, then get rid of them and be willing to give. My husband was in a union for 50 years. Every time they wanted something, they gave up something. He was a printer. Now, there aren't even any printers anymore. Kids can't write today. They don't know where the 13 colonies were. It's not all the parents. Parents blame the teachers, teachers blame the parents. Who suffers? The kids. So if you're going to teach, then teach. You're not making a pauper's wage. Just be reasonable and be willing to negotiate with a clear conscience and a clear mind, and don't just say, "Me, me, me." Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Smith, President of Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Every month, we hear how you're here for the students. There is no one who is here more than the teachers on a daily basis in the classroom providing quality education. The article on your website by the Business Review USA entitled "Making Elite Education Accessible to All" printed quotes from administration that all dealt with the building, technology, not one word about the staff. The article includes bragging about the many options students have, including online classes, which we do not have. You named a principal of cyber school well over a year ago. And that's correct, Mrs. Cook. We do not have a cyber school because we do not have a contract. And we were asked to give, give, give to have the cyber school, but oops, sorry, we'll just have to wait till the contract's settled to see what you can get, get, get. The contract would include technology, which would be online classes. So that $700,000 you're losing every year, there is money that could get back. We need to get to the table and settle the contract. Even Exxon has a commercial where they state that you need to invest in teachers, not just MacBooks that the staff did not request, but that money was taken out of the operating budget. President Obama and Governor Christie, who certainly have no love lost between them, came together when there was a crisis last month. The board and the Federation do need to work together to solve the crisis here in Pennsylvania with education. And that isn't being done because all our effort is trying to settle the contract. We do need to work together. At this point, after 34 months of negotiating, we should not be where we are in the process. We have tried to solve many of your problems that the district said they had, and when we settled one concern, it's no longer important to you, and something more important pops up. It's like a moving target. We get it. The governor does not support public education. But BP is not a distressed community, and settling a contract will not break your bank. There is more to a contract than economics, contrary to what some claim. Yes, economics is part of a contract. But you have even stated in previous meetings that you want fundamental changes in the contract. Our schools have run successfully for how many years? Excuse me.
Mrs. Smith, that's two minutes.
At the last board meeting, I was very pleased to hear that one member stated that negotiation is a compromise, meaning you have to give up something to get something. And I was delighted to hear another member say that it's finding the middle. If you honestly believe what you said, I would not be standing here 34 months later. The board must recognize that they cannot get everything they want in one settlement. No one does. Send your team with the authority to make the compromise that is necessary to settle a contract. With compromise, this can be settled this calendar year.
Does anyone else wish to speak tonight? Anyone else wish to speak tonight? If not, then I'm going to move into board comments, Mr. Amadis. I'm moving into board comments if there is no one else who wishes to speak tonight. No, we're only taking one comment per person. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? I will move into board comments then, and Mr. Amadis.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. In regards to making any more comments tonight on the, on a teacher's strike, I'm going to let the tension in the air mull, just pass by a little bit, and just say that I let my comments agree with what Mrs. Cook had said in her earlier comments, and I'll say no more on that, and I'll just, again, let some of the other things cool down and talk about something a little bit more lighter, especially in regards to some of the things that have happened in our country, specifically the Hurricane Sandy in the east, what happened in the east. I noticed we have some, the PTOs and PTAs out there, and in the past, I know that they have provided some help to the classrooms by bringing in authors and so forth. I just want to make you aware that there's a website out there that's available for having an auction to raising funds for Hurricane Sandy that has authors, many kid-led authors have donated some funds or some of their services. And if you would want to check it out, the website is joaneelevey.com. And if you'd want to see me after for some of that information, I could give you some more information on it, perhaps bring some things in here for the kids. Other than that, I just wanted to also say congratulations to all the award winners this evening from our community. And I was going to say congratulations to the Boy Scouts who are here. They left a little bit early, but I appreciate them coming up here, and hopefully they can check it out later on tape. And that's all I have to say for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Campbell.
I stepped off an airplane three and a half hours ago. I was in Guatemala, and I was there during the earthquake. It was a 7.2 in the state of San Marcos, near a small town called Reforma, where I was working as a physician. And there were 50 deaths near the epicenter, which was 30 miles away from where I was. Hundreds were injured. I saw an average between 110 to 130 patients every single day, and it was humbling for me, and it was very, very touching. Now, I'm new to the board. I was elected just this past, this past year, October year, and I'm still sharp on the learning curve. Got a lot to learn yet, but I'm learning a lot. But it's kind of, it's almost surreal for me to see, like, the paradigm shift when you're thinking about life and death issues, and to each one of you, this is so important in one aspect or another. Think, think how much of an issue this is to this community, you know, to settle the strike, to go ahead and have things resolved. I told you before, and several times, to this community in this room setting, that I had, my mom was a teacher, my dad was a teacher. I have eight aunts and uncles who are teachers. I have utmost respect for teachers and everything that they do. And I can assure Nicole, who spoke here earlier, that this is a top priority of ours, absolutely a top priority of ours to remedy this dispute. If you've looked, I mean, just when I caught back from my trip, I kind of glanced at what the stock market was doing. We took another big hit while I was away, and it looks like we're, and all the financial indicators look like things are getting worse. We need to be fiscally responsible. We need to be balanced. We need to be balanced. We need to be fair. We need to be fiscally responsible to all of our community members, yet hold that high reserve of quality of education at all costs. I don't want to see that compromise. Nobody wants to see that compromise in this room. But doing what you have with your resources that are available. We took some big hits, as you've heard, from Harrisburg. We took, we have expectations of a lot of things we have to do to fund Peasars coming down the road. These are big jumps, 15%. Big, big jumps down the road. We've got to be responsible for that. Negotiations is just that, negotiations. Parties need to talk. And I'm just gonna let it settle then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sestich.
Sorry, I can't follow up on that one. I just, I want to congratulate again the award winners, our athletes this fall did a good job in a lot of different areas. Take a deep breath, folks. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and it's moving into the holiday season, and I hope everybody stays safe and help our kids move forward, and I hope we can bring this to an equitable resolution for everybody.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule.
As the AIU representative and the Steel Center representative, I'd like to invite peers and anyone in the board. They're asking also superintendents. They're going to have an educational forum at the AIU on Friday, beginning at 11:30, a light lunch, and it will go until 3:00. We will be looking at all of the vocational education and what they would like to do with the school. They're gonna be really doing some real exciting things, and I look for. Steel Center probably to be one of the people also engaging more students in more of the current trends and skills and occupations that we'll be hiring. So this is the first time that they've done anything like this, and it's an exciting move and kind of a brave move, given the times, to ask for everyone's input so that they can move forward in creating this new, you know, upcoming curriculum. So I'll keep you posted. But anyone that would like to attend is invited to come.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. It's a pleasure to see so many people here. Mrs. Rule, thank you for the information about the AIU forum. I will be there on Friday. I plan to attend that. I'd also like to announce that we'll be having a curriculum meeting on November the 28th at 7:00 PM, so those of you who would like to join us, please do, and wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Again, thank everyone for coming. I really appreciate seeing all the faces, and I hope, once the strike is settled, that we continue to see the faces. I would really like to see that happen.
The contract, not the strike.
The contract. I apologize.
Could work some Freudian slip.
No, it's not a Freudian slip. It's just been, no, it's been a long year. Not a long, not a long, I apologize.
He said it's been a long week, and it's only Tuesday, right?
Yeah, I said that earlier tonight. I apologize for that. But when it's settled, I'd like to see everyone show up. One of the questions I would like to pose, just as a general question, when we've had budget meetings over the last three, four, five years, how many people have attended a budget meeting? So we've had four or five people attend budget meetings. If you really want to know what's going on in the district and where the monies are coming and going, please attend. And then that way, whenever we make an announcement like we made tonight before the public comments section, you'll understand where we're coming from. You know, we're a public entity. The books are here. You can look at them. Come and take a look if you think we're not telling you what we're telling you. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I apologize again for the strike comment.
Thank you. Mr. Means.
Yeah, I sympathize with the teachers. Everybody wants to make more next year than they did this year, and make more this year than they did last year. But the rise in teacher salaries is unsustainable. The money just simply isn't there. And I was also disheartened to see the comment about the $700,000 for the online teaching. I mean, you know, the attitude, if the attitude is, "Well, you can get your money after we get our contract," I want you, everybody, to realize that $700,000 is money that's not there for the students, and it's not there for the teachers. So it's not punishing we, the individuals of the board, it's punishing the people affiliated with the school district. That's it.
And I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and thanks for listening to my lengthy comments this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. after we get our contract, I want you, everybody to realize that $700,000 is money that's not there for the students, and it's not there for the teachers. So it's not punishing we, the individuals of the board, it's punishing the people affiliated with the school district. That's it.
And I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and thanks for listening to my lengthy comments this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn? Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
But because someone like you took the time to give their unique gift of blood, this little girl was given a second chance at life. Help save the life of someone right here in Western Pennsylvania. To find a nearby location where you can donate blood, visit centralbloodbank.org or call 1-866-DONORS1.
If you could do one thing to help prevent 36,000 deaths, help decrease hospitalizations, and the spread of disease, what would it be? Get a flu shot.
Influenza is a serious disease that can lead to hospitalization and sometimes even death. The flu can affect people differently. Even healthy people can get very sick from the flu, spreading the disease throughout the area.
In 2011, the CDC reported that 20% of the US population contracted the flu, with over 200,000 people being admitted to a hospital for flu-related complications. By getting a flu vaccine, you can reduce your chances of getting the flu and the possibility of spreading the flu.
When more people get vaccinated against the flu, it decreases the spread of the disease throughout the area, making your community a safer, healthier place to live. Tri-Community South EMS is offering free flu vaccines to adults in our local communities of Bethel Park, South Park, and Upper Sinclair.
So do one thing this year. Get a flu shot. It can save your life as well as others. For information on flu shots, contact Tri-Community South EMS.
Hi, I'm John Bauer, and I'm here to talk about sudden cardiac arrest. Heart disease, including sudden cardiac arrest, is the nation's number one killer. Sudden cardiac arrest happens when the heart suddenly stops beating. This may be from a heart attack or a number of other causes. Whatever the cause, without immediate action, the sufferer will die. You can take action against sudden cardiac arrest. If you see someone suddenly collapse and it looks like they aren't breathing normally, you need to act immediately. First, call 911 or your local emergency number. Then start immediate chest compressions. Place your hands in the middle of the chest and begin to push forcefully and rapidly, at least 100 times a minute. If anyone else is nearby, have them relieve you after two minutes. Keep taking turns. If you're in a public place, ask someone to get an AED. When it arrives, open it up and follow the voice instructions. Don't stop chest compressions until the AED tells you to. Keep going until rescuers arrive. Sudden cardiac arrest is survivable if immediate action is taken. You can make a difference. To learn more or to learn CPR, contact Tri-Community South EMS at 412-831-3710. Be a lifesaver. Learn CPR.
Hi, I'm John Bauer.
And I'm Ryan Hatcher with Tri-Community South EMS. Did you know after your ambulance emergency, you could receive a bill in the mail, and you may be surprised to find that your insurance provider doesn't cover the full cost? With a subscription through Tri-Community South EMS, you can help yourself as well as your local EMS agency.
Most insurance providers do not cover all costs for an emergency ambulance transport or the patient's copay. The cost of care provided by paramedics and EMTs ranges from $650 to over $1,000. Your $60 subscription, which amounts to little over 16 cents per day, covers all family members of your household as well as guests for emergency medical transport and treatment without transport.
Insurance providers, including Medicare, do not pay for treatment without transport. Your subscription will assure you that you do not have to worry about deductibles or copays regardless of your insurance coverage.
With a yearly subscription, the costs that come from emergency treatment and transport are never billed to the patient when insurance information is provided. We have agreements in place with surrounding EMS agencies to provide our subscribers with subscription benefits in those areas.
Tri-Community South EMS does not receive tax dollars from the communities that own and operate us. In 2012, the majority of households did not subscribe to our service. Subscriptions help provide revenue to our service, allowing us to provide exceptional care to you and your family.
From the staff of Tri-Community South EMS, we thank you for your support.
Help us in 2013 continue to provide the highest level of care when an emergency takes place by joining our team and subscribing to Tri-Community South EMS. For more information regarding subscriptions or to subscribe online, visit our website, tcsems.org.
Hey, you ready?
Of course I am.
What are you waiting for?
I was waiting for you.
So we're going to continue the puppy thing real quick. Okay. Places, everyone.
In a minute.
Do I have to do everything myself? You can't do it all by yourself.
I'd say that...
Sure, I can. No, he can't, and neither can I. So why don't you come on down to BPTV and help us make some of the great community programs you see on this station every day?
Yeah.
I mean, we can help you make your TV show ideas a reality.
It's pretty awesome.
So come on down. I mean, I am pretty good, but I'm sure I could use your help.
Illegal is illegal, and that's what we have to take care of at the border. Why don't they put blimps up? I think one of the issues is flying airplanes is going to cost money. So I'd throw out, put a blimp up there, run blimps from both sides of the fence line, and they, they run probably at a...
How can Mr. Bold have it so wrong? That is one of the worst ideas I have ever heard. Wait. What's this story? Military surveillance blimps tested at the Texas-Mexico border? Bold had it right all along. Oh, man. Never going to hear the end of this one.
Good morning. This is Mr. Bold calling for Mr. Dave Cable back in 2006. Mr. Bold was on Bethel Park right now, and if Mr. Bold recalls correctly, he was poo-pooed by Mr. Dave Cable back in 2006 for really being a wacko when it comes to suggesting blimps along the border. I told you back then that I hope that I never saw anything official using the word blimp. Well, much to my enjoyment, the word blimp has been used in an official article when they talk about controlling the borders. It's unfortunate that Bethel Park doesn't have any billboards because Mr. Bold would be looking for some type of public apology from Mr. Dave Cable regarding his poo-pooing of the suggestion of using blimps to control the borders. I await your call. Thank you.
I deserve that.